All right.
Okay.
So we got it?
I'll record it.
What's that?
A recording, so they'll say anything back.
Well, are we?
I was told to say that.
Is this in Word?
I don't care.
Uh, I call this, uh...
Tuesday.
Meeting to order Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty nineteen. It is six oh two P M. Please join me for a moment of silence for the two schoolchildren who were gunned down today, and then we're going to pledge allegiance. Director Collins, would you meet us?
Absolutely. President Green, right hand over your heart, veterans may salute, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Director Parent. Director Collins here. Director Colafox, he called and he'll be in a little bit later, he'll help us out till six o'clock at work. Director Sangster?
Present.
Director, President Green. Here. Three, two current de absent. You want me to?
Sorry?
Did you want me to?
No.
Is there any public comment on any, on any item that's not on the agenda this evening? One thing, young public, was San Gil Fire Association's Christmas party is December twenty nineteen, uh, six o'clock on December tenth, and it's gonna be at the Parrot's Hall behind the Mission at seven ninety-five Monterey Road. And same as every year, there'll be turkey, uh, ham, and everybody would bring a dish to compliment that on some other stuff.
Okay.
So what time is that?
It's gonna be at six o'clock tonight. If anybody's coming, there is a sign up sheet here, you know you're coming, and you'll sign up and say how many people.
I'm hiring. Turn the volume down for a turn now.
Yes, you are, too. And did tomorrow put something in that on? Chips?
They approve the agenda.
What's that?
They need to approve the agenda.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Sangster, second by, uh, Collins. We just do a roll call.
Yeah.
Sangster?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Green?
Yes.
Three yes, two absent. Okay, so we're gonna go straight into, there is no consent calendar, so we're gonna go into, uh, action items or discussion, right, or, or session. Uh, and discuss district functional space. The, uh, the use of functional space in the district, and, um, I guess, sorry, Kelly, do you wanna give a presentation that gets kicked off?
Yeah. So as you guys are aware, we're currently working on expanding the waste treatment plant. As part of that, we have to build a building for an operations, essentially an operations center to house all of the offices for the operation of the treatment plant, the locker rooms, the showers, break room, the lab, uh, the shop space, cupboard space for equipment. And we can kind of see that outline in the, in the, whatever pointer.
What is the current square footage of the treatment plant?
Uh, I don't have the whole thing, it's, uh, a hundred and fifty by sixty nine.
That's the footprint, a hundred and fifty by sixty?
A hundred and fifty by sixty-three. So.
And that includes the coverage of equipment?
That's the entire building, so that's, uh, ninety-four hundred square feet for the entire building.
Including covers?
Yeah, including covered in the shop space. Shop space is fifteen hundred square feet, and the cupboard area for all the equipment and vehicles is thirty-two hundred square feet. So the inside, the actual office space is forty-six, forty-seven hundred square feet.
Forty-seven?
Yeah, that's all the offices, break room, meeting room, uh, lab, coffee room, bathrooms, hallways, records, everything. Um, so basically, the reason this is all coming about is, right now, we're at seventy to ninety percent on the daily average of our plant capacity of two hundred thousand gallons a day. Um, as you're aware, in June last year, a water board issued a notice saying that we're gonna exceed our capacity in two point nine years, which seems like we're on track to meet that. Um, so we've been working towards the expansion of the treatment plant, uh, this building is part of that expansion. So the, if you look at the plan over there, there's, uh, six, six green dots. Sorry, this is clear for you guys.
Let the record reflect it. Director Parent just arrived.
Sorry, Dad.
That's okay. Six oh, six oh eight.
So basically, it might be easier if you guys would see that, but basically, these green dots and these offices down here are the offices that would not be required if we built this, when we built this building. So that would be basically the district, or the district administrative offices, general manager, accounting, board clerk, or board clerk, account manager, and billing. And then part of what is shown is the meeting and conferences.
What's the square footage of that area?
Man, you guys are asking all these number questions.
You're supposed to know the width, width times distance.
Well, it's fifteen, fifteen by, e, fifty, fifteen by sixty-five.
Nine seventy-five.
So nine seventy-five plus three sixty-four.
That's five sixty-four for the office space?
Three sixty-four or five sixty?
Three.
Uh, thirteen thirty-nine.
So thirteen hundred square feet of this would be essentially not necessary if we didn't move the district office there.
Okay, well, okay, wait a minute, give me the number, give me the number again for off, the, not, you're, so you're excluding the lab and the, and the locker room?
So all of this, all of this block right here is forty-seven hundred square feet.
Got it.
You said thirteen hundred?
Thirteen thirty-nine.
Thirteen thirty-nine.
So thirteen thirty-nine is these green rooms.
Okay, so that's actual office.
Yeah. The rest of the space would all be necessary to operate the, the treatment plant and provide, uh, facilities for the operators.
Doctor Vone, gonna be you and one other guy operating that?
So there's two operators that will be, that will be their job is to operate that. We have two other operators, and their job will be to take care of everything else in the district, so all the water, all the reflection, that will be their job.
So you need, uh, forty-seven hundred square feet?
Well, we're, we're not gonna have discussions yet, we're letting them.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So, like I said, pretty much, so all of this space would be necessary in some form to operate the district, provide ADA compliance for showers and bathrooms, and buy, provide OSHA compliance for, um, worker safety. This would include an office for myself and an office for a future compliance officer for environmental and safety. Um, in the future, we will end up with more people, more administrative people in utilities to, uh, to manage the, the growing number of reports and compliance issues that we have.
What's the max number that you could see as the, as the plant progresses, as it matures or whatever? I mean, the, the maximum number that would take to operate a facility that size?
So, in the beginning, we're assuming that two operators will be sufficient to operate it.
Right.
So that's two operators, then myself to oversee everything, and probably in the next two to three years, another person to oversee compliance and the safety of the whole district. So that's, that's where this comes in.
Is that, is that a requirement of regional water, the compliance officer?
We're not required to have a separate person to do that.
But you're thinking it's getting to the point where...
It's gonna be a matter of time, and whether we have anybody here with the knowledge and enough time to actually do all of this.
Are they gonna be only for compliance, or are they gonna be actually hands-on?
Well, theoretically, everybody would be trained in how everything operates, and they'd be able to be a functional member.
Would that be, would they be a functional?
Are the utility operators well as compliance?
Yeah, this is all speculative at this point, but depending on what the load was initially, most likely they would be. As we grow and the need for compliance becomes even greater, it might be that they wean off of operators and, or office, off, as an operator, and go into only compliance.
So you could end up needing, including yourself, six people?
So, we're gonna end up with five people.
Include yourself.
By the time this plant is done, including myself.
Right, and then...
And then in a couple of years, probably end up with a sixth person, and then depending on how the, the compliance issues pile up, if, uh, we find that we can't operate that plant with two people, or if this district goes to the point where we need to hire more people for the field, then we may end up with more people after that. But that's right now...
So my question was, what's the max that you could ever expect this district to need?
I would say probably in twenty to thirty years, we probably wouldn't have the, the eight to ten, including my position.
Just in the field?
Well, in utilities.
Right.
From my, my position down to operate.
The twenty to thirty years to the way that, I think the county envisions this community, I mean, at that point, you'd be talking city of. This district would probably evolve by that point.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of...
There's a long time.
There's a lot of large districts.
Nothing's that long.
There's a lot of large districts, so it could stay as a district, but it could be that...
We gotta keep calling it's gone.
It could be that the, uh, the, the amount of people that we have to have and the cost to have those people doesn't make it effective to have those in-house, and maybe at some point, the district gets absorbed by the county, or we co-share a position with another small district.
Has any, um, has anybody looked at what it would take for like, maybe, if this plant was operated under contract? Or would that be possible at first, and...
It is possible, uh, most likely.
Is the cost extremely more than, I mean, typically it is?
Well, if you rewind a couple of years, when I was here by myself, when we're looking for a contract operator to...
I can't remember the offhand.
It was essentially a thousand dollars a day.
Right, okay, then it's a hard question.
To have somebody on call and, uh, to come up here a couple hours.
And the town, that's one person.
Yeah. So it is very cost prohibitive, but it doesn't mean that that won't be a part of the...
It helps that it's the way you're...
Abel Abes does, they're still contractor, right?
Yeah. But they're, they're, it's a little bit different situation, they don't really have as much infrastructure.
Right.
To maintain it so that...
You know. Do you ever expect that we would need more than four office staff, including a general manager, a bookkeeper, a cashier?
Well, I think eventually, we'll say, right now, we have, uh, three people in the front office, the general manager, myself, in the utility side.
Yep, but take yourself out of the picture.
If I had that, then we have four, four positions right now.
Right.
Um, it is very likely in the next, probably ten years, that we'll have, have to have probably one more office person to help with the, the billing and the accounting side of it. Probably no more people in the actual accounting, like, uh, the managing money portion, but in the accounts or, or accounts, accounting portion.
But that would also, I think that one person would handle that with the general manager.
For the, uh, like, the bookkeeper position?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we would need another person for that, but we'd probably end up with at least one more person in the, the front office taking payments or dealing with customers.
That kinda took us into the wood sphere, I mean, it's about the building, but I mean, this, this has to do with it absolutely.
It absolutely has to do with it.
But, but, you know.
It absolutely has to do with it. You know, and, and also that, they know, people are talking, that would be if we keep the same existing services that we are having right now.
Yeah, that's assuming that we go forward with the same five departments that we have. If we, if we take on something else, then you can almost assure that there's gonna be somebody to manage that.
Mm-hmm.
Um...
And with the rate of the growth, that's what I'm curious about, is like, what's that gonna look like? I don't want us to plan for a building and then have the same nineteen ninety-nine situation happen where they built this fire scene and then the C S D all of a sudden showed up.
Well, that's what we're trying to prevent.
I mean, if you're looking at the staff of potentially eight to ten in utilities, and granted, that's twenty to thirty years out, but if the district offices were also moved there, that building as it sits is not big enough to accommodate that number of staff.
Well, if you look at it in today's perspective, we're, we're very overcrowded in this building.
That's for sure.
You know, my personal feeling is, is that this room is so long, it kind of prevents people from wanting to come to the meeting because they feel like they're in a, you know, it's a camp. But if, you know, we are, we are building, three quarters of this building is required anyway. So building these office spaces is not a real huge burden on the district. And in five, ten years from now, if we get to the point where we need extra office staff, that's probably the same time that we're gonna wanna have a bigger, more centralized building anyway. And if the town has grown that much, then most likely there is funds available to build that out and build that downtown. At that point, then these offices will probably be repurposed into utility offices for the additional operators or, uh, additional personnel that are managing new utilities or whatever we're doing at that time. Uh, so my, my stance is that we would build this out, we would move down there for the foreseeable future, and then in ten years or twenty years, or whenever we grow to the point where we need more space, then we would look at a new building, probably downtown at that point. But right now, the financial situation of the water and sewer departments is not, does not allow them to have a separate building other than what we're already given. Uh, based on, uh, I don't remember which meeting it was, but we've been tracking it for about four months, the number of people coming into the office. Uh, basically, we have, on average, six point four people come into the office on a daily basis for some sort of service, for water and so on.
What's the minimum and the maximum?
Uh, the minimum is zero, uh, the maximum is actually on Friday, we had thirty people come in here, which was way above what we had had. Uh, before that, the maximum was twenty, so thirty's kind of an outlier.
And part of that, we took in consideration if it was paying bills, if it's on a payday, and then measures to reduce that. Sure, but you got to six point four, it was running nine for quite a while. And, and how long of a period?
It was...
How long of a period are we talking?
This is over four months.
Four months, okay.
So it was...
So twenty people a mo, twenty people a month, on average, would come into the office at one, at any given time?
Well, no.
Twenty to thirty?
So we're at six point four.
In one day of a month?
Per day.
Right, right, so, but one day of a month, you might have twenty or thirty people in here.
Yeah, this is average of workdays, it's not average of total days, so...
Right, it's based on like, what is it, two hundred and seventy days of the year? Yeah.
The days that the district offices open, right.
It's...
But what about, what about others, auditors?
Well, the auditors, they're three days.
Outside, service people?
Well, those service people are here for drinks, so...
Well, they'd be going there also, that's a wonder.
But they, most, for the most part, they come here and then they go there, so they would just be taking a stop away from them.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I understand that, I'm just, it's, it's additional traffic is what I'm...
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that, like, today, we met with, uh, a company about the land of the treatment plant. Well, they went to the treatment plant, if they had come here to meet me here first, then they would have still just gone to the treatment plant after that, so they would have had two stops and...
Right, so my, my point is, it's, it's, this is just customers.
Yeah.
Sure. On top of, on top of the normal operations, district, right?
It's not staff, it's only customers.
Right, staff or vendors or...
It's only customers that are here or are...
Contractors, yeah.
Um, since we installed that drop box upfront, we've got three point eight three payments per day with a maximum of fifteen, um, so it's actually helping them quite a bit. And then on average, we had eight people...
Are people dropping cash?
No. Well, not that I've noticed anywhere.
Checks, mostly?
Mostly checks.
Okay.
I haven't seen any cash, usually it's checks.
No IOUs?
Don't know about that. Um, and then on average, we've, we had had, over the last three meetings, eight people come to meetings, aside from staff, but we have, uh, four people today, so... Um, and we also are nearly there on our A C H, which most people have asked for, and that would most likely drop our, uh, number of people in the office considerably, because most of the people that come in and pay now would pay three A C H if it was free.
They'd do that up with their phone or whatever?
They could do it on the phone, in their home, on their computer, wherever.
And the drop payments, there was, the average was what, three, three point eight, up to fif...
Up to fifteen.
And there would be a learning curve to it and educating the public on the drop box and on the C H C payment in. That's good, that's good, I like it.
So, so that's basically this building, it would be a metal building, so generally, it's gonna be square or rectangular. So if we were to remove some of these spaces, it would still create dead space that we would wanna utilize in some fashion. Um, you guys can't say it very well, but there's a couple different color elevations. These are not the colors that we would pick, I'm not sure where the colors came from, but, um, it's just a representation, just to kind of give you an idea of the different surfaces. Um, aside from that, and I apologize, this isn't bigger, but this is Bonita coming off right here, and that would be the main access for customer traffic. Um, coming out down this way is an easement that we have through the railroad, and that would be the primary commercial traffic.
That's the dirt road?
That's the dirt road.
That's gated off?
Yeah.
And, and that's not our gate, who's...
No, but we have an easement through that property, so that gate has our lock, just like it has the Downey's lock and Gallo's lock and...
So there'd be something that you would open daily?
So we would open it when we knew the commercial traffic was coming, we wouldn't use that for daily operations traffic.
What kind of, what kind of commercial traffic are you, you're like, do you have now, and, I mean, chemical trucks, potentially?
Delivery, like, large delivery trucks, probably not FedEx, but, you know, commercial...
Trucks, truck delivery?
Semi-trucks delivery, uh, uh, chemicals, or, you know, septic waste, or anything like that.
Take your trucks? You take your e-waste out of there, your mattresses and stuff like that?
Yeah, the, the larger trucks that kind of get the mattresses and the e-waste, those would all be directed that way to come out of the neighborhood.
Okay.
So you would only have...
What about the trash truck, I mean, these are already in the neighborhood?
Well, he's already there, so...
Yeah, so where's the dumpster, where is it now, the dumpster?
Well, the dumpster right now is right there, inside the gate.
Okay, okay.
So...
That wouldn't change?
And they would go farther into the yard to get it, but...
Right.
But it wouldn't make any sense for them to come all the way around here when they're already coming?
And unlock a gate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the new, new building would be right here with a parking area in front of it. Um, if you're looking at this, all the red is new facilities.
How many parking spaces?
Uh, I think there's twenty-four. We just changed it heading down, so...
Would the parking spaces change if you didn't build the extra space?
We wouldn't need as much parking.
Is it gonna be a big, the, the, the building's gonna stay a rectangle?
Pretty much.
And it would just be a void where that space is, or would it just be shorter? Or what's, what space? Well, just for clarification, like, the, yeah, the, the proposed office space.
So we would, we would reorganize this to be as useful as possible.
To take that, to take that up, shorten the building.
But there, like I said, there's gonna be a dead space in here somewhere.
The square footage footprint's not gonna change of the building?
Building size is the same.
It will shrink a little bit, but this building, the length, is designed so that we can put all of our equipment under cover.
Okay.
So if we shorten it too much, then we'll have to build another building to cover...
Okay.
The remaining equipment.
I see, so the square footage includes the covered space?
It's all square footage, so ninety-four hundred square feet is the entire footprint.
Thanks for the clarification.
So if we were to take off, say, this last bay, then we could reorganize this a little bit, but there would be probably a little bit of dead space, so either offices would get bigger or they would, we would add an extra office to, to utilize space.
Okay.
But like I said, this, this is all accounted for, so if we start taking it off, then we're gonna have to add that somewhere else.
Right.
Um... Where was that? Uh, so the red, red is all new facilities, the blue is, uh...
That's five hundred eighty-seven square feet, just for reference.
That's the office, is it right?
No, if you, if you eliminated that last, uh, storage bay by shortening the building, the lengthy conference room, then you'd have to accommodate for five hundred and eighty-seven square feet of equipment storage somewhere else.
Yeah.
Right. I thought square footage was a big issue, so I figured it out.
Thanks. So blue is new, or blue is existing buildings that were being relocated and repurposed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this building right here would be the, basically, the recycling center for e-waste and mattresses, and eventually household hazardous waste, like paint. Um, these are the, this is the fire department training area right now, well, this is a pond right now, but this is a fire department training area right now, and it'd just be expanded out, and their facilities would be relocated so it's more usable for them. Uh, this building right now is a material shed, and it would just be relocated where it's actually more usable. And it's currently down here. Um, these three ponds are, exist right now, this building right here would be sitting over pond one, which is, would be built in. We don't really have enough space anywhere to build a building, and that pond isn't necessary once we build out.
Well, what's the ponds that we're having to be?
This is the pond that's got all the problems.
That's got what?
All the problems.
Okay.
So this is the one that's got all the holes in it that we have to...
Okay, so the, the building's actually sitting on another pond?
The building is sitting on pond one, which is the first one you pass when you come out.
Okay. Okay.
Um...
What's the distance between the building and pond two?
That's about, um, that's twenty, so that's forty feet between the side of the building and the pond.
Blacktop?
Yeah. All this dark area would be, uh, some sort of hard surface, either asphalt or concrete. Uh, in front of the building right here would most likely be concrete to account for the forked weight and the summertime heat, so we don't sink in any asphalt. Um, this, the big red block right here would be the new treatment, uh, facilities. So that would be at, at a minimum, it would be a cover, so a steel, steel frame cover over all the processes to protect the, basically to protect our investment. Um, at some point here, there would be the first, the first phase, the first train, which would get us to three hundred thousand gallons, then next to that would be pre-plumb for the second train, or to get us to six hundred thousand gallons, and then depending on what the overall size of that is, we'd probably plan for a third phase to get us to nine hundred thousand gallons, which would get us probably to, to fifty years from now. Uh, these two ponds are, exist as percolation ponds, they would be retained in the event that we don't have anywhere for the water to go after it's treated, and we can put it back in those ponds and then go back in the river. Uh, these red ponds right here would be an equalization ponds, so when the water comes into the plant, it comes in off of Bonita, comes in, and would go into the treatment area here. Uh, any excess flow that's not being treated at that moment would go to these ponds through gravity, and then through gravity would be drawn back as we had lower flows.
It wouldn't, the line won't be underneath the asphalt driveway, correct?
Which line?
The line coming, you said the water comes in?
So, so the lines, there's two lines that come in down Bonita right now, so they come in down through the middle of the street, come down through our driveway right now, and they come all the way to where this little red box is.
So it's kind of...
So this little red box is intercepting those before they go to our existing lift station. So it'd go into there, and then it would fall down into a new lift station and new headworks, and it would be treated from there.
Yeah, what, what my question was aiming at was, are we gonna run pipelines underneath our driveway where if we have to access them in the future, we can't just dig up dirt instead of digging up asphalt?
Well, the issue is, is that this is gonna have to be a paved lot, otherwise, we're gonna be constantly maintaining it.
Right, no, I get that.
The, these lines that come through here, by the time they get here, they're already almost twenty feet deep, so the likelihood of digging those up is pretty slim.
Okay. And what's, what's the, what's the material now, what will the material be?
So, right now, there's two lines, one is a, a clay line, a ten inch clay line, the other one is a ten inch plastic PVC line.
C one hundred or?
Well, it's SCR, so it's
Okay, we're replacing both of those?
They're
Part of this project?
They're in good shape right now, they're not gonna be replaced.
And the new, the new PVC?
A clay line, we're not gonna replace it?
The problem with clay lines is where you come around trees, there's no trees there.
And then you just leave it anyway?
And if we were to do something to it, we wouldn't line it, and when we come back in the next five years, hopefully, to line all our sewer lines, then that would be one of the lines to go.
After you've jetted them, of course.
Yes. Well, I mean, that's, you gotta clean them all, but you have to line them all.
That's right.
But, yeah, since there is no trees in this area, and there's not really any, any active excavation or anything in that area, those lines are in, they're in pretty good shape as far as we can tell. If we were to dig them up, we would have to dig them up, either you would have to come from over here and just burst it and then pull a new line in, or if you did dig it up, the ground there is so rocky and sandy, you would have probably a forty foot gap at the top by the time you got down.
What's the material gonna be at the plant from when you tie in PVC?
So, all the new gravity lines would all be PVC, any force main lines would probably be few HPP, depending on where they're at. These four top ponds up here would be for storage, with these two ponds, storage of treated, treated wastewater. The, that would be the wastewater that we would potentially sell to a vineyard or in some other non-contact use for irrigation. At this point, these four wouldn't necessarily be needed right now. These two would be converted to storage and would drain into a pump station down here. Depending on what the commitment is to buy the recycled water, then that would determine whether those four would be needed at this point. So at three hundred thousand gallons, these would be sufficient, but some of the dirt out of these ponds would most likely be needed to fill this in and to fill this pond right here, so it may be more beneficial at that point, just to dig the pond out, at least reiterate it, and maybe not line it.
Okay.
But our engineer has assured me that we have enough cut and fill to balance out, so we shouldn't have to bring anything in, which would be a huge saving size. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.